Grady Bonzel.
Here.
Dennis Sneeden.
Matt McKenzie.
Here.
Mary Ellen Kumera.
Wally Henson.
Here.
Alright, thank you. Any general public comment? Okay, moving on to point three, public hearing for adult entertainment establishments, proposed zoning ordinance change. So at six oh one PM officially open the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
My name is Zach Valentine. I'm the market manager for Break Time Corner Markets and Vape Time Locations. We have two locations here in Goodland, Kansas. Vape Time would like to expand our product line in the store to include some adult novelty items that you would already see in Walmart. It's just I think our zoning is off. We only market our stores to twenty-one plus at the Vape Time location. It is not a gas station anymore. Everyone still thinks it's the old Conoco. It is not a gas station. It is a vape store with access to gas. They are very surprised when they walk in and it is not a gas station. So, but we do ID. If you're not twenty-one, we do ask you to leave immediately. We don't allow you into the facilities. The bathrooms are even locked with a code. No one can get in unless we let you in. And I think the only thing that we had questions about was if there was going to be any signage on the building or signage in the windows. And there was not going to be any signage at all at the location advertising any of the products. We only have advertising for the Vape Time location itself and like Kuka Tobacco, those are on the window already, but that's it. But it's more of a smoke shop. It's not a convenience store. We have two aisles of snack items, that's it, and soda in the coolers. We don't even have, we're waiting on the beer license to come in and then it'll even have beer. So again, it's going to be twenty-one plus only. It's already posted on the door. The reason we opened that location January sixth of twenty twenty-five, we had many people ask for very specific products. And we looked into those products and before we decided to ask to bring them into the location, we actually referenced it. You can only get those type of items if you're almost near Denver or past Salina. Except where Walmart's already selling them, but they're labeled as personal massagers. And I brought reference sheets for you. Some of the items that they're carrying is what exactly we want to carry as well, but it's already in Walmart. It's just locked in a case and ours will be in a glass display case that's locked that no one can access without us being there. We also have a location in Burlington, Colorado and Joaquin, Kansas, and we're looking to do the same for those locations as well. So we're just asking the city of Goodland to amend the zoning ordinance so that we can step forward and expand our product line to the customers of Goodland. Any questions for me that I can answer? Alright, so, well, thank you very much for your time and your consideration and changing the zoning ordinance for us.
Thanks for comments. Kent, any other comments? Alright, so at six oh four PM, I'll close the public hearing. So, next steps.
Well, the, you know, there's an ordinance before you that adopts and amend sections of, and we've done this before. As far as sections nineteen, two oh two, nineteen five oh one and nineteen five oh two. Which is the definitions for the zoning code, the use table and the use standards. And I included in the staff route outline for the, this ordinance. That the attorney recommended that we adopt the entire list of definitions and that's why the ordinance is much longer. It was only a few definitions at the start. But it's the entire list of definitions. Doesn't mean there is any other changes. The only changes deals with adult entertainment establishment. And then the categories listed underneath it for the different type of businesses. And then like the planning commission directed staff, there's the items regarding the use standards. And then also the, the use table as well as the use standards. And so that's what this ordinance does. It, and what this board can do is either recommend for approval. Or recommend for approval with any changes that you want to the city commission. And then the final votes at the city commission regarding this ordinance. Do you have any questions for staff regarding the ordinance?
I don't think so. Looked like the only thing from our past two meeting discussion change was that Jake wanted the whole definition in this one.
Right.
But otherwise, it's pretty much as we had talked about the last couple of months.
It's exactly the same, so.
Grady, anything?
No.
Wally, any questions for Kent?
No thanks.
Okay, so with that, a move that we recommend to approve ordinance seventeen ninety-six and ordinance adopting and amending sections nineteen two oh two, nineteen five oh one and nineteen five oh two of City of Goodland Municipal Code to adopt an amended definition, use table and use standard for adult entertainment establishment to the city commission. Okay, moved by Matt, seconded by Grady. All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
That's, that's it for now. We'll go ahead and take care of the site plan review and then we can handle.
We'll come back to that, okay. Alright, so moving on to bullet point number four, site plan review for nineteen thirty-three Caldwell Avenue addition. Zach, you want to start?
Before you, I have put together a site plan review report for the area of nineteen thirty-three Caldwell Avenue.
Also advanced auto body. They are looking to do an addition to the property to expand their business. There's going to be a small portion on the southeast side that'll be thirty by thirty. And then to the north of that tied into the same addition, it'll be sixty feet by fifty-five feet. And that'll go along with the northwestern diagonal of the property line there. Like I stated, there was a little confusion as to where the actual property line is, if it's on the fence or if it's how open records show it. If it is how the GIS system shows it off of our engineering map. The closest point on the thirty by thirty addition would be approximately fifteen feet from the fence. And then the closest point on the sixty by fifty-five addition would be approximately also fifteen feet from the fence. So they'll still be maintaining a distance from the fence. It's just a question as to where the actual property line is. When going to the questions. A two, all of that has been identified. It's just the engineered stamp plans have not been turned in yet. That will be turned in before permitting is allowed. These are just plans for you to get, to see what the plan is moving forward. A four, the existing lot lines easements and right of ways, the reason I have that on there is just simply because there's a discrepancy in the maps. And we aren't for sure as to where the exact property line is, if it's on that fence line that was established when they redid the park there or what. A eight was the type of illumination. There's really not going to be much illumination on this portion of the building since it is in the back corner of it. Obviously, there'll be some lighting, I'm assuming, but nothing that would directly point to any roadways or into any of the other businesses. A nine, signage, there's no additional signage proposed to this addition. A ten, there's no additional landscape plan as they're going to level the ground and leave the existing grass and everything that's already there. Eleven, C and D, there are no overhead electrical lines where the addition is proposed. They will contact eight one one. Jason and Neil have spoken about the water line that would need to be moved, which is shown in the GIS there. There is a water meter that sits on the northwest corner of their building. That water line actually doesn't run underneath that building. That line was vacated. I'm not sure how long ago. But that line actually runs pretty much just north of where that fence runs on the north side of their first addition on that north side of the building. If that makes sense to what I just said, I can come point it out to you if you would like.
It's not the blue line that lined up. It's north of the.
North of the white building.
Yep, it's actually right there.
It runs north of this and along the north side of that fence and then it ties into the meter.
Okay.
So this would just have to be moved up closer to the actual main line that runs up there. Which that's already been discussed with you and Neil, so that's figured out.
On the GIS, it's not as moving, yeah.
A twelve, nothing to indicate a plan for runoff. Obviously, there's going to be a little different runoff because the building is expanding. It's not going to absorb into the ground, but with the retention pond being right there, all of that's already directed to flow right to it. I don't think it would be an issue for neighboring properties. A fourteen, the current zoning wasn't shown on the site plan, but I provided that for you guys. Everything around it is C one. B, it's not located in a downtown mixed-use project, so we skipped all of those questions. Then you got C six B. There is no pedestrian access on the surrounding properties other than around Pioneer Park, which is separated by a fence. So that kind of doesn't make sense to have included on the plans when you can't walk through a fence to get there anyways. C six D, the kind of the same thing. There is no perimeter public sidewalk that goes around that area. So there's really no need to show it included in the plans when there's nothing there to begin with. C nine D, the storefront does not face the street. So the portion that faces the street is actually a part of their work area inside. So having windows and stuff like that wouldn't be beneficial. That's just adding more of a risk for everybody that's on the street. Having something blow out, break glass everywhere. C nine E, there is no portion abutting a residential district. And that is all for my report. If you go to the next pages, there are pictures included, which we kind of discussed already with the A eleven, C and D regarding the water lines. And then the second picture will show you the discrepancy in the actual lot line. Can you pull that up from? Oh, you got it right there. That's fine.
Yeah, I can do it either way. So on that picture, it shows the property line running straight down that fence line as you can see here. And then if you go to that next picture, you'll see on the open records, it actually shows the property line going through their parking lot.
And we haven't found documentation to confirm either one, so.
I spoke to the city attorney and he stated we could come to an agreement between property owners and the city stating that the fence will be the new boundary line. There will be some additional groundwork as to making that appropriate, but that is what he stated as well.
That seems like a simple fix. If we could just make a simple agreement to move it to the fence, that'd be pretty nice.
I believe if I missed, tell me if I'm mistaken, but that has to be approved by the city commission as well, correct?
Yeah, it's actual land document to do that, so that needs to be approved, but.
Yeah.
That's, it's more a matter of paperwork than anything else to get it done.
We're not talking about that property. Okay.
And that is all I have for my report.
Any questions for Zach? Jason, do you have anything you want to share?
Not really. Not the only thing that maybe wasn't mentioned, the water drainage. We are looking at a single sloped roof.
Hey Jason, could you come up to the podium?
Yeah, sure.
People, we can hear.
We are looking at a single sloped roof going from west to east to shed that water. It will have taller sidewalls. That was our main concern was getting all that water out of there. Right now, our roof slopes north and south and we just want to make sure that's shed properly. That's really about it.
Alright. So help me understand, I keep looking at the drawings and I can't wrap my mind around how the addition fits on.
I don't think I included their picture in the, that's my fault.
We had elevations, but I can't figure out what's old and what's new. Can you do it on?
No.
So.
I know, it's not.
The thirty by thirty will start at the south corner here.
Uh huh.
Go over thirty feet, which actually ends up being right about in this area. And then goes up thirty feet, which is about dead center of the building.
Okay.
And then that's where they'll start the fifty-five by sixty addition and that'll come out.
And it goes.
Back up and also leave the distance between the property line and the building for the fire gap and all that stuff, so.
So you pretty well fill in the triangle there is the plan, okay. Any other discussion or questions? I'm looking for the words for the motion.
That's okay. We approve the site plan as presented by the building official.
Alright, I move we approve the site plans as presented by the building official. Alright, moved and Zach moved. All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Nay? Alright, site plan approved. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. You can stick around if you want. It's riveting stuff. If you want to go, you're free to go. Same for you guys too. I guess the next piece might apply to you guys a little bit if you want to listen in on what we're going to talk about with the licensing ordinance.
Have a good night.
Thank you. See ya.
Have a good night.
Okay, so point number five, now review of the licensing ordinance.
We've talked about this the last couple of months. We narrowed it down except for one section that I was still trying to finish up and. I was just having a problem myself trying to, I wanted to narrow it down a little bit regarding the section five oh three. But the ones that are already there, this is the formal ordinance and says the five oh one. Basically is the definition and then it refers back to the zoning regulation ordinance that we just recommended for approval by the city commission. The five oh two is the licenses required for adult retail business. The adult, section five oh three was about the application. And I kept going through this and I think there wasn't a clear direction from the commission about which example was appropriate or which parts of it were appropriate. Or, you know, was it enough or was it not, not enough? And I went back to kind of, one of the things that staff was talking about is trying to make it simple. So that it, less chance for error in regarding to it. And this, the Winfield example is just fine until it gets to the last C, what is that? It's in C in parentheses, which I don't know if is that correct.
Application processing?
Yeah, application processing, which doesn't match the other parts when we were talking about saying that it would be an administrative approval. And if there was a dispute regarding administrative approval, it could be appealed to the governing body. The Winfield example has it that it shall be scheduled for the governing body to approve. Or the city, they might even say the city council. I think it's in similar ways. So that was the one that Kent obviously have a conflict, you know, can't go to both. It needs to be one or the other regarding that. Otherwise, the Winfield example was okay, but there, it was. If you go back up just a little bit to where it's number four and then A, B, C, whatever. You know, the applicant shall present to the city clerk and shall copy documentation that the applicant has attained eighteen years of age at the time of the application to submit it. Any of the following shall be accepted as documentation of age. It's that kind of stuff. I'm going, okay, that's, okay, that's getting a little. A lot of details to put in the code. I can see it being part of the license application process, but you try to keep things out of the code that for whatever reason can get tripped up later and then you end up, it doesn't get cleaned up and then it gets to be an issue.
Yeah, well, I don't like vague stuff in the code either and there's a point in here that says any other form of identification deemed reliable by the city clerk.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't like that either, no. Or the library card.
Yeah, so. While that might make sense in the application process, I don't think that makes sense in the code.
Right, right. So, yeah, it can be on the application form.
Yes.
You don't have it in the administrative form.
I think you want a list of things you would accept, but probably not in the code. It needs to be in the application.
Right, and it's not, to your point during the last couple of meetings, Grady, that you mentioned, well, we want to make it particular enough. We want to have it enough detailed so that it's, it's not an easy thing to do.
Right.
But, you know, we don't want it completely difficult. All I'm saying here is where, where's the place for that? Is it in the code or is it in the application form?
Did we put a statement in there something about referencing the application guidelines or something?
Yes, and I've seen that in other codes that they, they refer to the form, refer to the form that's provided by the city clerk.
I like that.
And then it can take care of those details in the form itself. Now, it does state before that, I'm kind of going backwards in this five oh three, but but it also has the difference between the manager, employer and independent contractor license and then the license for the premise. That goes to, and we've talked about it, the different types of adult entertainment establishment. And as far as for novelties or bookstore or video store or whatever. That's probably not as pertinent as it would be in a person-to-person type of adult entertainment establishment. That's where the employees should be involved and we talked about it as well. So that was more, you know, that also one of going, you know, maybe it should be in the code. Cause then you still have it in case some other establishment wants to, at least put in the application. But there should be something within that, and I didn't find a good phrase to state that this applies to this category of adult entertainment establishments and not when we were talking about the adult novelties or adult video store being. We don't want the clerks, if the clerks are going to be changing every month or two months or three months or six months, have them go through that process as well.
Yeah, you'd have a manager sort of responsible party application. And then that responsible party is make sure that their employees.
Make sure the employees are taken care of, so.
Yep.
So those were the couple thing, you know, it was getting tripped up on as far as with the example. And there's an awful lot of information there and some of it's real good information to have in the code. But I was reaching a point where there should be a stop line and I didn't know where to put the stop. And to refer to both the, the couple of things that we're talking about. Does that make sense?
Yes.
The other example from Newton is Justice Lightly. Yeah. It has, and then it got into the corporation thing. And there was also some stuff in there that I thought, again, does it, does it need to be in the code or does it need to be on the form? You know, or how extensive to be. I think for our purposes regarding this five oh three. As long as you give general staff direction, you know, this, we aren't doing a formal approval or recommendation to the city commission. You guys just wanted to approve it or not approve it, but send it at the same time as the zoning regulations. As the zoning regulations, this city commission.
Right.
And if you give staff direction regarding this section, then we consent, you know, have that as part of the recommendation to the city commission. But I don't wanna overstep as far as staff talking about this, does this at least meet what you guys were, have been talking about the last couple of months regarding this ordinance?
My answer is yes, um, but I agree with you on just the two things you brought up right there. So I think we just need to kinda nail down some direction for you there and we're on the right track.
Here's the only thing I would add, and we might have answered this before, I might have forgotten, but, uh, you know, we kinda talked about the age requirement. I see eighteen, is, is that, yeah, the legal age?
That was saying as the manager, the owner of the business, you could license it at eighteen, right?
Yeah, well, and these are from other communities examples, so I don't know regarding eighteen. Um, with our license, licensing is twenty-one plus, correct? Now we're looking at each other and we're not, we're not a hundred percent certain one way or the other.
Yeah, I'm looking at.
I think that's part of what we need to decide because five oh three is what states. Between the two jurisdictions of what we're looking at to get our code from, you know.
So I think one of the things we brought from the last meeting was we wanted to model the alcohol license.
Right.
So that would put it at twenty-one.
Alright.
So let's stay consistent there, I think.
And that's fine, that's easy enough to take care of.
And then I guess, you know, the, on the, uh, the first part we talked about with this long list of things, I would say just, you know. Keep the list of acceptable, um, IDs to the application and not the code. So, you know, just whatever the code needs to say, refer to the application for acceptable sources of identification. The first part, or the sec- second part we talked about, the first part is backwards. That one's harder for me to come up with something quickly, I need to think about that for a minute.
I guess another question would be, that's not in there, would be, would you require their employees to be twenty-one?
I, I vote yeah, I mean, that's kinda my thought process.
Cause you can serve alcohol at eighteen.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
You can't pour it, but you can serve it.
Well, my preference is twenty-one all around, so that's maybe.
I, I think that's where I'm too, twenty-one all around, well, any thoughts there?
I'm, I'm just bringing up things that might come up in the future.
No, that's okay, I, I'd rather start at twenty-one and have a, a. Discussion around the reason to have an exception or, uh, you know. Would rather make it a little bit more restrictive to drive a conversation than just a rubber stamp. Makes sense? Okay.
The other thing that we talked about was the manager or employee license, um, for the other. Types of adult entertainment establishment to have a phrase and not have the employee license refer to the. Uh, adult novelty stores, is that okay or not okay?
So, if I understand, right, I think, I think what we want is for novelty items. It could be a license obtained by the manager and the manager is responsible for employees. If it is anything beyond that, meaning person-to-person, then it needs to be every single person in that establishment needs a license. So, are you?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that enough direction?
It is enough direction, yes.
Okay.
Um, regarding five oh three and. And then. Well, we, we can move on, it'll come up in the, the later section regarding how it's actually, the approval, yeah, and how it's approved.
Okay.
Um. The section five oh four is the fees, the annual. Uh, non-refundable licensing fee for an adult entertainment establishment or for the renewal thereof is two thousand. Is what you said last time to staff.
Right.
And then a first year's application fee. Um, or an initial application fee of two hundred and fifty. Um, that's what you directed staff down. The, uh, next one is the five oh five, the license is limited to one identical type of adult use. So all of those categories are listed under the adult entertainment establishment, which is listed in this little one, little section as well. Um, the license is only for one category. And then five oh six, and this is the approval or disapproval of it. The examination of the application issuance of license and disapproval. The city manager or his or her authorized representative shall examine and do the things regarding the license. Um. If the license is disapproved and section C's there, the applicant is notified. And then they may appeal it, the denial to the governing body by submitting a request of appeal within a certain timeframe. So, and then it says they can, uh, appeal that. If the governing body disapproves, then they can appeal it to, um, court, yeah, judicial review. Um, five oh seven is the renewal, stating that when renewal needs to happen. Which is during a certain time of year, it's November first to December tenth, basically the last month and a half of the year. Um. If the application of the renewal is not made during that time period, then expiration shall, um. That you can have the license until it expires and then you have to go through the new, uh, new license application, new process. Um. Five oh eight says the license can't be transferred to anyone else, it's basically to the entity that it starts with. Um, if somebody new ends up buying the place at some point in the future, they would have to make their application for a new license.
Can I interrupt here, uh, on the renewal, if they miss the deadline for renewal. Is there a penalty or something to?
It starts over like a brand new application, so they'd have that two hundred and fifty dollar fee of the initial application.
Okay.
Just that first year fee really is the whole.
Okay. Alright.
One difference. The penalty if, if you violate it. And this is typical on some different parts of the code. Any person who violates or any provision of this article shall be punished by a fine of not more than five hundred dollars for each violation. But each day can be considered a separate offense, now that's up to the judge. Or the prosecutor if it actually would get that far. But, um, that's for the penalty section within the code. And that's the licensing ordinance.
Okay. Well, I think cleaning up the couple things we talked about gets it pretty much to what I feel like we've talked about over the last three meetings. So, I think we're on the right track, if we give you enough direction to pull that together.
Yeah, and what, and I guess, is it okay for staff to go ahead and then in. Present that to the city commission with the changes that have been discussed?
I think if you get what we talked about tonight, we're, yeah.
It doesn't need to come back here for.
City comm- we can give the city commission, they can make their decision.
Okay, we can do that then.
Okay. Alright, appreciate the work.
It was, uh, and it's not done because we still have to prepare it for the city commission meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, we're gonna move on. So, next bullet point, oh, you guys are free to go, we're gonna move on to some other business, so thanks. Vacant building ordinance example and further discussion, so I see. Big work from Zach, I assume.
Yeah, so what I placed in front of you basically is a, just a general description of the actual ordinance itself. So if we do move forward with adopting this program, I would basically have Josh take what I presented in front of you. And post it on the website under the vacant building program to explain to everyone how it works, the reason why, what its goal is and all of that stuff. Um. Starts off with the purpose, which is, uh, structures which are left vacant for extended periods of time have been proven to breed crime. Pose public safety risks, reduce property values, and reduce the economic viability of the community. Um, this program is being used as a means to identify and register the vacant buildings located within the city limits. To govern the responsibilities of the vacant building owners and to provide appropriate incentives for vacant buildings to be returned to a productive use. As a result of the program, the cost or burden of the existence of vacant buildings will be redirected from the general citizenry. To the owners of the vacant buildings. So to kinda break this down without going through it step by step, the whole purpose of collecting the fees every year it remains vacant. Is to sit aside in a fund that would then be used to demo those properties. That way it's not coming out of a general fund every year, it's already gaining its own money, I.
Or as much.
Yeah, that, that's what the, that's what the air quotes were for, for those that aren't watching. Um, if you flip to, what's it, page three. Um, it gives you exemptions of a vacant building, what would cause somebody not to have to register? It'd be something under active construction and actual active construction, not just, I'm gonna fix one board every hundred and eighty days. To say that my permit's still valid type of thing. Um, buildings that were damaged by fire or some other extreme weather event. Buildings that are listed for sale, which they have listed under an Ohio license realtor, obviously because Urbana's in Ohio. So we'd have to change the language to things a little bit to have a Kansas realtor on there. Um, and then other special circumstances granted at the discretion of the director of administrator or, and or the zoning compliance officer. So either the city manager or myself. Um, it talks about what happens if a property sold, we've dealt with.
Stop you for a second, so on the bullet point around buildings that were damaged by fire or some other extreme weather event, is there a time limit? Like, you're, you have a fire and you have ninety days to.
Fire is different in the city of Goodland because we have our own separate thing for when houses are caught on, when a house catches on fire.
So there's already something on the book.
So, when insurance pays that out, they have to pay a portion to the city of Goodland, which then sits in an account. Which builds interest until the property is brought back to use. Once that property is brought back to use, that money that's sitting in this account will be released to the property owner. If the property is never brought back, then we have that money to use to help demo that property.
And then it follows the same timeframe as what you would do on a.
Unfit structure.
Okay.
So what about active construction, is there like a time limit for that?
Permits are good for a hundred and eighty days unless you have continuous work. It only goes null and void after a hundred and eighty days of work stopping.
So if an individual was to get a permit, start a project, whatever, doesn't finish it, doesn't get a new permit. And it just sits there for another year or two or whatever, what happens?
They would have to register it as a vacant building at that point.
Okay, alright, that's, okay, okay, makes sense.
I believe it says a little bit further at the beginning of this, um, it's like thirty days. So you'd have thirty days after that permit expired to have it registered as a vacant building.
Okay.
And that's residential, commercial, everything and?
Yep. Um. The next page, um, that tells you what constitutes a vacant building plan. So upon registering these buildings, they have to turn in a plan as to what they are going to do with the property. Um, that plan could be anywhere from, this house sits empty for eight months of the year because I'm only here for two months of the year. And then we can decide, well, that doesn't qualify as a vacant building, it's still being used, it's in good shape. Then obviously you can go around that way. Um. If that plan is not met, that just helps us in the next step of things of going through the unfit structure process. Because we have the documentation of this house was planning to be torn down by the owner. It wasn't done for this time period, so now we're moving forward with doing it ourselves. Um. The rest of it's kind of just. I mean, it tells you what they do as to how they inspect buildings for the vacant building program. Ours wouldn't be quite like that, we have a smaller population base and not as many homes as Urbana. So it doesn't take quite as long to drive around town. The ordinance I gave you guys in the agenda packet states all of the fees, all of that stuff for the years one through four. And then any year beyond that.
Actually, I don't think we had it in the packet.
Did it not get put in the packet? Okay. Well, the fees. No.
I do have one other question, so if I, let's say there's a vacant building and somebody doesn't get to, like you say, and they don't register. Is there a way they can approach the, the city commi- the planning commission? Fast forward an extension or something like that, or is, is that something that we need to consider or anything?
I think we could probably consider something like that, but it'd be on like a case-by-case basis, not just a simple blanket statement.
Sure, okay.
Because we, we have properties around town that. Do bare minimum just to.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want people to, that work the system, but, I mean, I, I know sometimes there can be situations that maybe.
Oh, most definitely, yeah.
I just wanna make sure there's a, a process maybe to help people in that.
A, a fail-safe?
Yeah.
Any other questions, direction?
I, I like where we're headed with this, um, I just think we wanna make sure that we, uh. Like, kinda some of the previous questions, we just make sure we have either some reference to what happens if your building becomes vacant. Kind of the timelines and, you know, make sure that.
Um.
Like the fire thing, that references back to what the code already says about fire structures, that sort of thing.
I think it says in here somewhere. Um, on the bottom of page three, how long do I have to register my vacant building? As an owner of a structure which meets the definition of a vacant building, shall register with the department of zoning compliance. Within ninety days of it becoming vacant or within thirty days of being notified that the building is made vacant.
Maybe I'm getting into the weeds here, uh, but what if, like, somebody has like, they're putting up a shed in their backyard and they don't get to it? Are we gonna, is that considered part of this?
I think this is gonna more so go towards primary.
Okay, okay.
Structures, not accessory structures.
Alright, I just, just wanted to kinda clear on that a bit.
The accessory structures, I think in my opinion, would fall more so under the unfit structures category, not the vacant buildings.
Okay.
The one caveat to that might be.
Like an ADU?
Yeah, you know, we do have an ordinance, or, I'm just trying to think of it. We have an ordinance that allows accessory structures to be on there.
Vacant lot.
On vacant lot. Um, if there isn't. use of that structure or it's.
Here, there needs to be some wording around that, like if there is not a primary structure, then the accessory structure.
Becomes the primary.
Becomes the primary.
And then it's, um, I mean, there isn't a whole lot of those type of things.
Right.
There's, there are some.
Yeah, they're around.
Well, yes, I'll buy it all the time.
Yes, drive by it every day.
That's a, that's a golf cart.
That's right.
But that might be something for us to consider as far as how to.
Yeah.
This is, uh, what they have described underneath what is considered a vacant building. Secured other, uh, secured by other than normal means, so by any means other than normally designed to actually secure the building. Unoccupied, um, if you're talking multifamily, multi-unit structures, more than half the units have to be unoccupied to be considered vacant, so you can't have, well, for prime example, the roadway, you can't rent the one apartment and then operate none of the rest of the building. Um, obviously a vacant building. And then evidence of vacancy, which is any condition that on its own or combined with other conditions present would lead to a reasonable person believing that the property is vacant. Such conditions include but are not limited to significantly below standard utility use, overgrown or dead vegetation, accumulation of newspapers, circulars, flyers, mail, trash, junk, debris, broken or boarded up windows, vehicles, auto parts, materials, obscene window coverings. Um, and pretty much personal items consistent with habitation or occupation. So, it kind of goes through and lists what determines a, a building as being vacant. That way, we can't just go in and say, oh, this is a vacant building, you need to register it. There's a, a set list of what defines it as a vacant building. Gonna be kind of hard for some buildings that people use strictly as storage.
Right, right.
Because technically it's not vacant, they're using the building, so. But it'll help us get away from the houses that are sitting around town. Parents have passed away or multiple generations of family has passed away and now it's just sitting here collecting our wonderful good dirt.
All right.
Well, I can think of a lot of buildings that appear, you know, there's no activity there because it's used for storage, but the owner keeps it in good shape, it's not.
Falling apart.
Falling apart, it's not getting broken into, you know, they're, they're maintained just because there's no people activity there. Uh, we don't wanna come down on those guys, but I can think of a lot of other properties that just sit with no attention that need, we need to address.
I think you do bring up another point, though, just, uh, what about like, it's housing like, uh, cats or, you know, other rodents and stuff like that, you know, I mean, I've seen homes like that where, I mean, I got, my neighbor, they don't live in there, but the garage, it's like a squirrel castle, I think, right there, because I see squirrels go in and out all the time, you know? So, but it takes care of the place, but it's just like, wow, okay, yeah, that can be kind of a.
I do not enforce a squirrel code. That one would probably more so fall under harborage for varmints.
Okay.
Which would be under the IPMC, which is the International Property Maintenance Code, as well as it being listed in the building code and the residential code.
Okay, that covers that, okay, all right, that's, that's what I was thinking. Man, you're on a ball, you know this stuff, that's good.
Nah, not all of it. Not even close.
So, moving forward, you're gonna word this for us instead of Ohio?
Cor- correct, I just wanted to show you this example so you could see what it looked like and then also to give me direction as to if you wanted me to change anything.
Make it say good. Other than the few things we brought up, I think we've either answered that because it's covered somewhere else or.
So, I can give you the fee structure real quick. Uh, it says, the owner of a vacant building shall pay a fee of two hundred dollars for the first year the building remains vacant. For every consecutive year the building remains vacant, an annual fee will be assessed at double the previous year's fee amount for a maximum annual fee equalling the five-year fee of three thousand two hundred dollars, and that shall be used for the fifth and all consecutive subsequent years of vacancy. So, every year that fee doubles, trying to push the property owner to A, do something with it so it's not vacant, or B, sell it to somebody that will. And like you brought up earlier, what happens if you sell it, well, the new owner still has to register it as a vacant building until it's not vacant.
If they have it registered as a vacant building, but they're not doing anything with it, when do you take over for unfit structure?
When it turns to an unfit structure.
When it meets the definition of an unfit structure.
So, that could happen as early as year two, maybe, or even year one.
With a lot of the properties around town, yeah.
I was looking at the numbers and I'm doing the math and so I'm thinking about a little, knocking down a little house. You know, by the time you get to year five, you haven't quite covered it, but you're getting close. Year six, you've covered it. I don't know, maybe, maybe we want it to be really stiff and expensive to just sit on things, but, I mean, if it continues pa- I'm just thinking like, how many years do you just keep trying to collect the fee, and at thirty-two hundred dollars, what's the penalty if someone just decides not to pay anymore?
Let me do that with taxes.
Any person violating.
So, then are we just, are we just putting a number out there that nobody's ever gonna pay because they can't afford to pay thirty-two hundred dollars a year, and so makes, it's just on paper and it's never collected?
I mean, at that point, it could be, I'd have to ask Jake, but could be potentially like an unfit structure to where if they don't pay for the demo, we assess it to their property taxes. I don't know how, tha- that's why I said I'd have to ask Jake, but.
That might be good for some clarification, on these fees, if they don't pay it, can we assess that fee to their, to their taxes?
You know, there's, there's certain regulations regarding what you can and cannot assess the taxes and stuff. And ca- and there's also notification guidelines, because you can't just.
Right.
Be able to go.
Yeah.
No.
We can clarify that and bring that back, some of those answers to.
I like that the four hundred, eight hundred, even the sixteen hundred probably is reasonable. When you get to thirty-two hundred, I think people just quit paying and then you're back to where we are today where we have, at, at that point, then maybe you do force an unfit structure if you can, but if the, if the building's vacant, deemed vacant but not unfit, and we're trying to charge them thirty-two hundred dollars a year, I wonder when they just say, good luck. I don't know.
And Zach's been trying to contact the city and he hasn't been able to make contact with how.
Emails and phone calls.
This city.
Emails and phone calls.
And we've come across some other codes, both from very large cities.
They're probably.
Kansas City, Missouri.
They're probably vacant.
They're probably vacant, the city building's vacant now. They had to register it.
And then we found Sedgwick, Kansas, which is a small town outside Wichita. Also has this vacant building. So, it's from the very big to the very small, I mean, Sedgwick's much smaller than we are.
Yeah.
So. But, uh, we can look at that and then bring back.
And I can email a copy of their ordinance for the vacant building program, that way you guys have a chance to look over it before our next meeting as well.
Good, I think if you have something that's kind of tailored to us based on what we talked about tonight and then we see another example or two from some other communities, I think we'll be on the right track.
Definitely, it's gonna help, I think, I mean, just trying to keep it, keep some unity or some, not unity, but, uh, a good appearance in our town here, you know what I mean?
Okay, with that, I think we'll move on to reports, uh, Grady, anything to report?
I did, but I forgot.
Give you a chance to think more couple, I'll give you one more chance when we're done. Wally, anything to report?
I guess you could call it a report, I keep having people in the community, friends, acquaintances ask me about this or that, particularly vacant buildings, wanting to know if we're gonna do something. I said, well, I think we're, we're trying. But that's my report.
Well, you can tell your people, we got three, um, buildings going out for bid for demolition right now. So, we'll see once those bids come in, um, whether they get approved and will I be able to take action regarding three buildings. But that doesn't mean that the problem's taken care of, it's just three of them are taken care of.
Three out of a growing list.
Okay.
Those same people are asking about the O Y O building now, you getting questions on that?
Oh, yeah, it's getting lots of discussion at the city commission.
Yeah.
I read your minutes, so, yeah, I see that.
The owner that operated under the Oyo brand is going through legal issues with the person that sold them to, sold it to them. It's looking like it will transfer back ownership to the guy that sold it to him and he is looking at repairing the roof and then basically selling it. So, that's where my knowledge ends.
I think the point going forward is people are actually talking to you about it right now. We went a long time not talking to anybody, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, maybe something will happen, at least discussions happening. Okay, I don't have any report, so can't you?
Nothing else at all, I think Zach is one, I.
Yes, sir.
Today, at about two thirty, I received another site plan review. Would, would you guys be able to meet a second time this month or would you wanna just hold off until the thirteenth of May, I think? This is, um, it's Quade Wooster, wa- I, I think that's how you say their last name, out of Colby, Wooster Construction. Um, they own that lot next to Walmart and the Oyo where Los, Los Gordo's Tacos is. They're looking at putting up a just normal building, but to sell their fireworks out of instead of that pop-up tent. Part of his site plan review stated that the first, I think sixty feet or forty-five feet is gonna be floor area and then the back half will be all storage. And then they plan on moving all their fireworks stuff to the back half of the store and then possibly renting out the front half for people that have stuff for the weekends or, I made the joke of Spirit Halloween. He said, I hope not because most of those buildings are falling apart and I wanna put in a good building, so.
My calendar shows every other Tuesday this month is good, except it's tax day and then earth day, so I don't know, we can meet on earth day or not. Now, I am, I am good on Tuesdays the rest of the month, but.
And my schedule's there too, so I should be able to.
Wally, could you do an extra meeting this month on a Tuesday night?
Uh, like what, two weeks from tonight or?
The twenty-second, would that work for everyone?
I'm okay with that.
Let's put that on the calendar.
And we can tell Mary Ellen you didn't show up, so then.
Yeah, you got volunteered, you'll be here, so, that should work.
And the only thing on that agenda will be.
Just that.
Just the site plan review, yeah.
Okay, so be quick.
It should be very quick, this one doesn't have any property line questions or anything like that.
Okay.
Don't have a, anything to report, I, I still haven't remembered what I was.
I could, I have a lot of stuff, I just don't have my report typed.
We did, had a gentleman share about the, his, his business, how does that work with us in the process of doing the ordinance? With, with him asking for authorization and all that, to, to do the, the adult entertainment.
That's the reason why we're going through this is because they asked for permission beforehand and our code does not allow it, which paints us into a corner as a city.
And even, well, but that application won't be re- it won't be received, we won't take it until the ordinance is approved.
Okay, that's where, I guess that's where I was getting at is.
His opportunity tonight was just to come and say what he wanted to say.
Okay, okay, all right.
Because of the public care.
Yeah.
Okay.
And our duty was to listen.
Okay. And then I guess the other part of that is that we even talked to Walmart or anything like that, or was we gonna do something like that, or?
Haven't talked to Walmart yet.
Okay.
Um, with the, um, the zoning ordinance, now that it would be considered by the city commission, now might be the time to actually start talking to them.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I wasn't sure what that whole process was like, like if he was asking now for that or, or we're in the middle of, of doing a new ordinance, so, okay.
Even if he would have asked it, it doesn't mean anything.
Okay, all right.
Because.
I, I just have to tell him no as of now because it's not allowed.
Okay, all right.
Although Walmart, we gotta get that.
Yeah, that'll have to be addressed once we have the ordinance.
The, uh, the other part with the zoning ordinance, for how I mentioned, it's a conditional use. So, we'll have the conditional use application take, to come back and the conditional use is done by this body.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for clarifying.
Okay, uh, minutes, everybody have a chance to remew last month's minutes? Any additions, corrections, changes?
I haven't seen.
Okay, I'll move, we approve the minutes from March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Moved by Matt, seconded by Wally, all in favor, aye? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn meeting.
Second that, moved by Grady, seconded by Matt, all in favor, aye? Aye, oppose, nay, thank you, guys.